My first item I want to talk to you about, I'm gonna go through our list pretty quick. And I understand the council has certain things you want to talk about. So Lonnie gave me a list of his little activities. He's not gonna be here. The bridge, the Woodbridge. The bridge company was going to move in on September the 7th. But they had a bridge to wash away in Minnesota. So they had to go there. And then it took a little longer than they anticipated. So they will be moving in here on September the 11th. A day that will live in memory. It'll take them four or five days. Street resurfacing, a total of 21 streets. Bid package has been let to all contractors that have been participating in the bid process. And to anyone else that has, that wants can call in for a bid package. The advertising process will be, let's see, the advertising is in the process. And we will have a bid opening on October the 2nd. And present it to the council on the October council meeting, which will be the first Monday. Marble Festival. The city is working with the Chamber of Commerce on arranging the stage and many other items to help make this event a success as we have in the previous years. Thank you Lonnie for your comment. I feel like Walter Cronkite. That being, I think we have finally arrived at the stage staying in front of the courthouse instead of moving in in the middle of the road, blocking the traffic. They can have their festival, their events that evening. I think the downtown merchants. And we just thought they have to do is just kind of turn around and face the other side. I think they want to use the courthouse, or best of my understanding.
I would like that.
Yeah. The sound wasn't that all.
What's it gonna sound?
You put a couple of speakers out, you can go both ways. It's just been impossible to put a clock, I mean a ball behind it on the courthouse lawn. So it probably won't work. You agree with me? Jack's Merch Association wanting to have vendors on the courthouse lawn and the use of the city stage on Sunday after the Marble Festival concert on Saturday night. That will keep us from having to rain the floors in, move it around 35, 50 feet. Jeep Fest show, a shine. Jeep Fest seemed to have been a huge success with people on Main Street as well as all over Pickens County. I guess you saw all the Jeeps and it was pretty neat. I don't think there's any activity that happened in the county at that.
Nothing bad happened?
Not that I know of. I think David Hall got hung somewhere on it with his truck.
They didn't have a beard by the way.
Yeah, I was gonna ask.
Wet bottles.
They just did bottles.
It wasn't big enough for them, something to do with the way Bud Bowser does it. So he had to screw off one of the bottles and I actually thought it was better. It went, I thought it went fine.
He said he had a.
Good night.
I think it looked better than a big old truck too.
Booked with fans.
I went to the high school football game. But they were getting down there Friday night covering. It was, it was tomato. It was a success.
It was a great crowd even though there was three separate rain showers. Mine was wild. Great crowd.
But no, no issues with the beer shop?
I talked to Lonnie about it, oh, and he was down in front of the night. And he said it's been one of the best Jeep Fest he has attended. He said no problems at all.
Gas pipeline, the gas line on Holly and West Church Street has been relocated and completed. Finally, it was gonna take them two or three days and they were there over a week trying to get the pity.
Well, that run fifty minutes.
Pardon?
They hit it a few times.
Tell them what they did and I never get a feedback on that. The Georgia DOT Turn Lane, while the gas line was moved, the DOT has started the process of letting a bid packet for the Turn Lane at Holly Street and West Church Street, better known as the Quick Response Project, 10 years later. New Year's Eve celebration, the city is planning and has started procedures to have a New Year's Eve celebration on Main Street, 2017 slash 2018. That's kind of his report. Any questions on any of that?
How are we looking for preparation for the storm coming next week?
Mr. Roper is gonna make that presentation in a few minutes. There's gonna be Hurricane Oakley all over again. I'm thinking 25 years ago, 25 years ago? 26, four years ago. Three years, three years.
Was it bad?
Where was that? Ninety, ninety-four.
Oakley was on top of Macon and just.
Oh, yeah. That was one year before.
They came through Jasper and took out everything. But Hurricane Ivan got us the worst.
Yeah, I bet Ivan's the one.
With that, water update, Mr. Hall?
You'll come right over here, you can be kind of in front of the camera.
Tell that Mary. You can sit right here if you want.
I'm sorry, when I put yours up, you weren't taking it. Stay out.
Disdangers.
Disdangers. Okay, yep. Speaking of the hurricane, we're gonna get all the generators completely filled. They're all about three quarters now, but we're gonna have all of them completely filled. And thank God we have them. If we didn't, I know, I remember back Hurricane Oakley, me and the mayor were sitting in the water treatment plant parking lot with business owners. And they were, when the water was gonna be back on, we didn't have no idea. It was all dependent on power. And those guys were doing the best they could do too. But what was it?
That was, that was when the power line ran from the old Els Lexon or rubber company across to the, to the plant. And every time the wind blew, knocked the views out. And John can attest to most of that. But finally, in ninety, or 2001, 2002, Don Hill with Georgia Power at the time relocated our lines, took that line out. We've not had that much, now we've got generators, which really don't need them as much as we used to.
Yeah. And we'll have everything that's filled up as we possibly can, looking at when, you know, anticipating the high winds and outages and stuff. And we're still gonna have isolated areas that run off of Bush pump stations, like in Hill City area, which we may be able to help with the, that county system may be able to help a little bit. It's up and running. The Hill City pump station is, as y'all approved earlier this year, it's up and running, does about 80 to 100 gallon a minute. So that might be able to help in that area. But more likely, there'll still be some isolated areas.
We should have that for a generator?
Yeah, we do. But it's, it's set up, it's gonna have to be doing lift stations. There's no way we're gonna be able to go out of the outskirts with it. It's gonna have to be really going lift station to lift station, you know, to try to keep up with the sewer parts. So I don't think that'll be a whole lot. Maybe we may even be able to help out, what am I looking for on Cold Road?
Ickry Cove?
Yeah, Ickry Cove. Maybe the county will be able to help a little bit more in that area too, their pressure's a little bit higher than ours. We'll keep everybody watered that we can, but there's just gonna be areas, I think, that will be isolated outages. I don't think that'll be anymore in town, but it will be some. We talked Jones Oil today. They can pump diesel even without power. They have capabilities of running this diesel fuel, you know, even with no power. So that's good, that we'll be able to, you know, keep fueling if it's a prolonged situation.
That's also where the fuel comes from for all fire engines and stuff as well. So we're okay with no power too.
We buy most of our fleet from Quick Trip. And, but the water treatment, wastewater and fire, the police go there in an emergency.
During an emergency, yeah.
They won't really let the rest of us because we buy from Quick Trip the rest of the time. But we do buy a lot from Jones Oil.
Yes. Hopefully, even though we're.
Yeah, I really hope we're talking about this from now.
Has the county, has the county started their? Steve, has the county started their meetings yet?
Yes.
Okay. Give us a little update, what y'all were telling me this morning. Steve was assuring me it wasn't gonna hit Jasper in our area, it's gonna be east of us. So Steve told me, David told me.
I think it's been so much better already.
I lied. I lied. I act like you're all lying, I lied.
It has.
Latest, latest track that I was looking at before I came here from the fire station shows, obviously it's coming, basically it's gonna come up through the middle of Florida. This morning it was pushing to the east, basically splitting Georgia and South Carolina. We would be on the far western edge. Late this afternoon, that track's pushed more westerly. So the current track right now, and I know it changes every 15 minutes, the current track showed it just barely east of Atlanta and Pickens County.
So it still has a chance at Panama City though?
If Wibby's lucky. If Greg's lucky, it does.
Greg Lovell's gonna make his land for that week at Panama City. They won't cancel his reservations because it's not supposed to get there. He'll have great weather, but probably a lot of people from Florida will be there.
Yeah, sometimes on one side, you know, it sucks it all out and it's just beautiful.
Yeah. Pretty.
Yes, it's depending on whether you're on the east side or the west side. Whereas Wednesday on the west side, we'll be in good shape.
We were, we were in Daytona the day after Wilma came through. Old motorcycles actually, we had to stay an extra day because of Wilma. It was huge. It was unbelievable the difference in weather.
It was all the way.
Inexcusable to, you know.
Okay, yes.
It's getting ready for, say, hoping, and lift station parts are in. But of course, next week, we'll wait until we see what this is gonna do and then get started on the Liberty Lane lift station.
Okay. That's what he talked about, that needed to be upgraded?
Yeah, all of it. Everything's in now. And so we're ready to get started, probably, you know, depending on the weather.
All right. Talk a little bit about John, if you will, the storm the other night, what happened around it. Not only hit Jasper, it's now.
Yeah, it hit all over the place. Just, well, we've had since the 4th of July, just really bad storms that don't move. They stay right on top of us, bunch of wind, a lot of rain. And with the drought that we had the past couple of years weakened the trees, and now we've got water loss this year, trees are just falling over out of roots. I mean, there ain't nothing doing.
Did John get down to his power at the water plant?
Uh, no, we lost, at that Liberty Lane lift station, we lost two inches of rain at the water plant, three and three quarters inches of rain at the wastewater plant.
And that's what worries me more about this coming, because last I saw, they showed tropical force winds here.
Well, I was coming to town, into town, and got a phone call from Jimmy Gleason, Police Department. And they had to block the road on north of town, just north of Valero, next to the jump start. Trees were down, had the power lines wrapped in it. And also a tree down on Old Federal Road, across the other side, next to McCarthay Place. And we were, we got home about 11:30, I think, if I remember going in the house.
Your crew's got done it too.
Your crew did, but we got, we got the trees up. We weren't able to pull out.
Yeah, we was able to pick up the hood road and all that through the primary.
But they got the power back on, isolated that area earlier than that.
Yeah.
It was quite an adventure, I think it was. Thank you, David. Fire department, Steve Roper.
Don't even look at me.
Council, lock yourself in just a little bit tighter to your seat, then you're open to speak.
Actually, the first thing I want to talk to you about is the roof project at the fire station. I gotta get my numbers pulled up here. If you'll remember, 20 years ago now, something like, we awarded the bid to WNS Construction for $12,319. Now, several months later, they have decided they don't want that job. So.
And that's after the other company came in and did the Burton Barn.
Right. The Burton Barn's completed, been done for a while.
So we're discussing the roof of the fire department?
Yes, fire department. Burton Barn's done. Fountain Roofing did the barn.
It was two different bids.
Two different bids.
Right.
Fountain Roofing did the barn, they're great, gone. WS Construction, they decided after almost four months, they don't want my job. Fountain Roofing had a bid in on the fire department, which was actually above my budgeted amount. Renegotiated with them, they're willing to take the job, 14, 7, 90. What year was that? 15,000.
And that negotiation Steve did on his own, to get him under his budget, otherwise we'd have to probably rebid it. And that got him in.
WS Construction.
But they had a right to it because they had the next bid.
Yeah, they are best of the only other bidder.
Yeah, I told him that too.
He said, if you don't take this, my hand's on.
Try to put a plastic over anything, right?
Yeah. That's hard for the kitchen table, just on the.
What was the first bid?
The first bid was 12, 319.
Now, what was that bid, so Tom gave you, that was under your budget?
14, 790, which is a difference of $2,471. Which is just barely under my budgeted amount.
Did they give you a reason why they didn't show?
They were not interested in completing the correct paperwork to do business for the city of Jasper.
They didn't want the paperwork.
Well, you have to lock, who are you employed?
The E-Verify paperwork that the city requires, they were not interested.
Couldn't meet immigration requirements.
Would've been nice to have told me that three months ago.
Yes, it would have been.
Well, we don't know that to be a fact.
All I know is they were not interested in completing.
Just for the record.
Well, at least you got it under your budget.
Yeah.
So I'm assuming I'll be before you Monday night, the council made it to ask for this.
Is that all you want to talk about?
Just easing it to it.
In my 2018 budget request, if you've probably already heard, I'm asking for a new fire engine. That's a little more than 38 bucks. This truck I want to replace is a 1998 model, which is our first out engine, would be the one coming to your house if it was on fire, the 98 model. With an unknown amount of miles, to be honest, because the computer system that controls the speedometer went out 10 years ago. And I couldn't justify paying 15,000 dollars to fix a speedometer.
I regret that.
Obviously, a fire engine, when it sits and pumps, the odometer turns.
So you should be paying 3,000 dollars.
He would've waited.
Right. The odometer turns on a fire engine when it's sitting pumping. That's how you get an accurate count of them. In other words, if I sit at your house and pump water for eight hours, that's the same as it being driven down the road for eight hours. So if I had to guess, probably 200,000 miles on this truck. Speedometer quit at 100,000 miles on it. The '03 model that we bought, which is basically 15 years old now, has got.
Our new truck.
Our newest truck. Our newest truck is an '03 model, it's got 42,000 on it now. My budget request will more than likely be over 500,000 dollars.
Are they still making the trucks down there, compared to after, is that place?
No, that place is out of business.
They went bankrupt because they.
They went bankrupt because they couldn't sell enough fire trucks for half a million dollars.
When did the paperwork?
The, the truck that we're specing, that we're looking at for City Jasper is basically a new version of what we already own. I said, I apologize for the cost, but I have no control over that. I'll be budgeting, assuming it goes through the budget committees, probably 515,000.
Now, is that just for the truck, or is that geared out truck?
That's the truck itself. It'll be another 74,000 for all of the equipment to go on it. And that's from a screwdriver all the way to the highest price item on it, it'll be 74,000 more.
So what color?
Red. And with a white top. Other people go red and black now, but I'm not a fan of that.
I don't know if you want one of the funky y'all.
No, no, I'm really not a fan of that.
Explain why we're buying one of the same versus going with ladder trucks, the different, smaller, bigger, wider, whatever you would.
Actually, the truck I proposed to buy is, like I said, basically a brand new version of Engine One, which is designed to work here in the city. It's short, it's got a short wheelbase, it's got 750 gallon water tank on it versus 1,000, which is on Engine Two. Our Engine Two is bigger, heavier.
What year was it born?
'03.
Okay.
Engine Two's an '03 model. Engine Two's hard to get around down, down Jasper because of the size. But it's designed to run with Engine One or out into the county by itself. That's the truck that runs all over the county with the county fire department for backup. It runs out first on fires we have outside the city. So that's one of their differences. It's 1,000 gallons of water versus 750, it's quite a bit longer. The new truck, proposed new truck, is, like I said, it's a newer version of what we have. Short wheelbase, easy gun, 750 on the water. And also something to keep in mind too, as far as ISO goes, those are the things we never want to talk about, is their ISO rating. After a truck gets to be 20 years old, you lose almost half your credit points on it because of the age. So Engine One's the 98 model now, so, you know, Engine Two's an '03. We're fast approaching time of losing points on ISO inspection. You have to pump up a certain amount of water, that's why the new truck will be a 1,500 gallon per minute pump. The same as Engine Two that we have now, which gives you 3,000 gallons a minute here in the city limits.
It's only got 750. Well, you got 750, so it's 30 seconds to be done?
Yeah. I put most of them out by 20 seconds.
Talk ladder truck, everyone who comes in, talk about economic development needing ladder trucks for our insurance rating, and what purpose it serves, and the little line you told me one time, even though we're on camera tonight, about ladder trucks.
You're gonna really miss saying that.
No, it's something saying. Paraphrase.
Ladder trucks are a completely different animal. A lot of ladder trucks don't even have a tank on them, as a matter of fact, because they're supplied by other trucks, like the truck I only buy, Engine Two, so on and so forth. When you have building requirements, these are code issues. When you have certain heights, ISO and NFA and all the gods specify what you'll do to protect that building, and that's where ladder trucks come in. If we bought a ladder truck today, which, to be honest, we need one. I'm not gonna lie to you, we need one. Those started about a million bucks for one of those.
I really want to ask you what.
They start, I could probably, I could probably buy us a ladder truck for 750,000 dollars. Now, it wouldn't be a Cadillac, obviously, but I could probably buy us one for 750. But it'd have a 500 gallon water tank, or even a 250 gallon water tank on it. Ladder truck requires four men to operate it, to set it up and to use it. Now, I've got three men on me at the time. There is a need, there are, there is a need, there'll always be a need.
Well, buildings in Jasper, of course, might.
Very thick.
How many buildings do we have that would need to be serviced by a ladder truck?
All of the mountainside manner, which were the daylight basements on those are three, like three stories tall on the backside. The proposed hospital expansion wouldn't require a ladder truck.
Well, they can just have it on a hospital fire now.
Yes, exactly.
So is this an actual expansion that they've planned? Or are you talking about the 20-year plan that they did about five or six years ago?
The one that, the one that they discussed, adding another floor to the top?
Yes, structurally, I don't think with the current, I don't think they can do that.
I didn't think so either, but if they were to.
Sometimes they could.
Right. If they were to, those things would require.
When we added the 10 beds over there, we explored that because we wanted to do an attached MOB. And we found at that time, with the current hospital requirements, we couldn't use the infrastructure that had been built for the current site. So not to say that we, I think any future plans over there would be just a separate.
I've heard several stories on expansion over there, so to be honest, I don't have a clue. I heard adding to the, buy another wing to the back, I've heard the second, or the extra floor on top. I talked to Norman not long ago, just in the grocery store and everything, and said they were talking about other things.
Yeah. Courthouse, what about the courthouse?
Courthouse on the backside is three stories tall. Trying to think, everything on Main Street's two stories, even with the back streets.
What's the county have, their fleet? Do they have, I don't even know, I mean, trucks they have?
If you need one, you'd have to get a Cherokee.
Cherokee, Yeller County has one, City of LJ, I'm sorry, City of LJ has one, Cherokee County, Canton had one, which was absorbed by Cherokee County. So you're only 30 to 40 minutes to get one from another county.
A lot of bad things can happen in 30, 40 minutes.
I agree, I agree. I've been to these other places to help them when things like that are going on. And it's amazing what 30 minutes will take.
Well, can we get any kind of grants or anything, go toward those?
Not, not purchase a vehicle like that. Some of your grants, like the Safer Grant and things like that, will work for personnel and vehicles to a point, but then you have to have someone to house it. Our current fire station will house a ladder truck. It's not deep enough, no. We'd have to remodel the station to add a ladder truck to the fleet.
So you might not put the roof on, I guess.
I know, I know. I get that umbrella like that.
Cars.
Yep.
Barn, that's roof, can we fit in the barn?
But just something to keep in mind, whether we buy a fire engine this coming budget or not, in the future, we're gonna have to buy a ladder truck. And like I said, today, I could probably buy one for 750. Most people spend over, over a million.
Lisa, how's the chief alone on fire trucks, fire engines, emergency equipment?
I'm not checking with them, fire equipment. Who was the company was gonna do, did she check with everyone finance?
It has the name of the, it's the in-house finance from the company that I would like to do business with.
There's a.
Sutton, Sutton Fire Equipment.
Isn't that who we used last time?
We used KME out of Pennsylvania last time. KME has been bought out by another company, will also own another fire truck manufacturer, and their quality is wrong. I've talked to several fire chiefs in several cities that own the new KMEs, they say they will buy one again. Well, our KME is the '03 model, it's the best truck I've ever owned. But the new ones just don't have the quality. Then that, and to be honest, we're never gonna be like the city of Atlanta or Cobb County, who buys, like for instance, Gwinnett County. If we purchase a truck, I can tag on to Gwinnett County's order with Sutton, get the best price available. It's called a tag on purchase. I don't have to bid, I don't have to do anything because it's all already been done. We're buying 22 fire engines at one time.
20?
20.
Have they been a fit for most?
They're.
Tag on? Have they been a fit for most tag on, or?
Yeah, for everybody, they can talk, it's like a pyramid game, if I can talk to you and buying one too, then I can give a better interest rate or a better break. I get a better price, you get a better deal. So everybody, everybody's, to be honest, doing the tag on purchase, as they call it. Gwinnett's already done all the work. For instance, if we were buying one today, Gwinnett's done all the work. We don't have to bid, we don't have to do anything other than agree to tag on to their class.
They buy 22?
22 at one time. Not, not in any year. 22 at one time. They're replacing trucks, there, there are some of them are only three years old.
Those people there?
Yeah, they're on the road 24/7. And in five years' time, that truck's worn out. It's absolutely, you know, it's crap. Where I can get 20 years out of a truck, they can't, they can't get four years. And we'll never be that big, not in any of our outcomes, we'll never be that big. The truck that I proposed to buy in this coming budget will still be in service when I retire.
If we do that.
And, yeah, it'll still be here.
When you retire?
Yeah.
So you've already planned your retirement?
Yeah, yeah.
Will it let us know?
Two days before hell freezes over.
He'll wait a half day that day.
Yeah, I'll have to work a month the day of my funeral.
Right.
Could this be a candidate? Could this be a candidate for a splosh?
Emergency equipment can be purchased with splosh money.
The county has.
The county's bought several, I don't think we can, I think it's.
Not, not an existence bought.
No.
But for the.
But, yeah.
Which I think's two years.
Splosh money is readily available for purchase. The county's already done. That's how they bought a lot of their stuff. County built buildings.
After, after they did that.
Jails.
In jails. Some purchase numbers, if you're interested, this is just simply, this is the in-house financing of the company that I like to do business with. Your first payment is due within three hundred and sixty-four days of delivery. You're looking at a twelve to fourteen month delivery date. If we ordered it today, I wouldn't have it till October of two thousand and eighteen. Takes twelve, twelve to twenty, I'm sorry, twelve to fourteen months to build this truck, once we decide to buy. So, if we order a truck in January, we deliver theoretically January of two thousand and nineteen, and we don't make payment till two thousand and twenty, basically. And that, that's the in-house financing options through, now Lisa's got connections with GMA, and that was, I believe she said three point something percent interest.
Well, that's what, it's the ten-year pay, payment on you, yours, I just wrote an amortization.
Through, through these numbers, a, a ten-year payout on the truck I propose would be an annual payment of basically sixty thousand dollars a year. Fifty-nine, six eighty-five. Twelve years is fifty-four, four twenty-two, fifteen years is forty-six, four twelve. It's like buying a car, you know, the larger.
It's different.
It's just like it only did.
They, they don't let me wait twelve months to pay for a car.
No, no, no. But, you know, they also give you the keys when you agree to buy it, instead of making you wait a year.
Tell them you wanted to wait a year, they tell you to hit the road and go to the next place.
So, but anyway, I just, I want you guys to be aware that that's coming. I've been in Johnny's desk, I've been sitting on his desk for two months now begging to put it in my budget.
What's your budget total, I shouldn't know that, for this year?
If I could see, I'd be dead.
Twenty percent of the total budget.
It's basically, actually, it's going like twenty-two, it's like twenty-two percent, if I'm not mistaken, it was, I don't have that number in front of me, it was nine hundred and some odd thousand, I think. If I'm not mistaken, I think.
Good, that's.
Nine and some change. The, uh, something to think about, I'm, I don't know as far as financing and purchase prices and whatnot. With everybody else, although there's always a price increase, the company that we're looking at, it's like everybody else, after November of this year, there'll be a three percent price increase. I know we're not gonna buy a fire truck tonight, but if we ordered a truck before November, well, we would save fourteen thousand nine hundred and twenty-five dollars. That's, that's basically the price increase after November this year, it'll be fourteen thousand nine hundred and twenty-five dollars more than I, I already asked for. I understand we don't, we don't purchase trucks tonight, I get that, but that's something for you to think about as far as financing and total cost and things like that.
Well, can you check on what it takes to get the chief on this and see what kind of deals we can get on this?
You mean GMA?
Oh, yeah.
More.
Yeah.
On the truck that you're proposing.
It would fall into this, it's, it's large enough purchase, they ought to give us some, so, you know, that was not a bad thing.
Ten quarters, not bad right there.
What did you get for it?
Probably as we sit here tonight, it's four hundred and ninety-five. Back on the moon, that's a lot of savings, five hundred dollars.
And now, we're paying them off in five years.
After November.
It's been ten years.
Four twenty-five.
Let me know if you can get two point four one on ten years.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think we would.
I'll find, I'll find a reason to part it some. So four, around four hundred and ninety-five and some change, and then after November, we go for four ninety-seven, five twenty.
The, the exact purchase price today, as it says, if we bought it now, is four ninety-seven, five hundred.
They ain't got no scratching down on the yard, do they?
No, I asked, they do have a green one, though.
Now, that's, that's.
Right, that, that is.
How would they cost to paint one of those?
Probably twenty-five hundred dollars.
Yeah, but they're even the bear, like. But you said, you said, you said that was from a screwdriver from the.
No, that, that, there'll be a seventy-four thousand dollar, just the price of the truck.
Four ninety and some change.
Oh, wow.
If you can get a green one cheaper off by the sunglasses that you can wear.
Yeah, who knows?
Not, not, turn it into a red truck.
I don't like you mentioning. What do we do with the old one?
The old one becomes.
Or we keep all three?
The old one becomes engine three, which is a reserve truck, which will. It, it'll, it'll still get, you'll still get another ten years or more out of it in a reserve. Pretty great truck, if it blew up today, I couldn't say a word. It has been one of the best fire trucks I would have been around.
And I know we're talking about a lot of money, but when you have, you never know when, you never know when you're gonna have a fire, the worst scenario is, you have a fire on the way out, so if your fire truck breaks down, you can't do better than this.
Now, I want to be honest with you, back in the day, uh, the old fire truck that, that we just sold at auction, one of the old ones, I threatened to fire Vaughn one time because he stopped and put it out on the way to a fire. It, it wouldn't, it wouldn't always start, we're talking about a, you know, a seventy-five model truck, you know, it used to be engine one. It, it caught on fire when they're on the way to a house fire, the breather caught on fire. And we've, we've been on the city for years, from the place here, right? So Vaughn stops, opens access panel, jerks the burning breather out, throws it on the side of the road, cranks the truck up and goes on the fire. I said, I'll fire you, that was a perfect shot to get rid of that. But, yes, things like that happen, naturally. Lovely.
Say you, say you didn't keep, though, what do you think would get you return on it, what would be the residual value of it?
Uh, that truck's probably today in the shape it's in, could be as worn out as it is, it's still a good truck, uh, it's probably worth fifty thousand dollars.
Fifty thousand, I'm sure.
Probably, on the used market from a volunteer department. What we need to do, like I said, because I have to have a reserve truck.
You're gonna sell that.
ISO says I have to have a reserve truck. This truck becomes a reserve truck.
In the twenty-year.
The nineteen eighty-nine model that's sitting there now, that is my reserve truck, is what we need to sell. And it's in great shape to be as old as it is, there's money, volunteer department specializes, volunteer in South Georgia.
Well, it's in their box range to buy.
Right, it's in, it's in their wheelhouse, kind of like that. So, so my, my ideal plan, obviously, is the ninety-eight model becomes engine three. Engine three becomes extra, we sell it, we sell that, supplement the cost of the equipment, whatever we want to do. We don't have to have that truck anymore at that point, the eighty-nine model.
Why would we paint that? Why, I asked you, why, a two thousand and three, you and TJ came over to pick me up, and TJ let me drive that truck.
I know, that's before that, it took almost a year to build that truck. Two thousand and three, when it delivered.
When I remember driving, that's the only one we've gotten.
We bought several rescue vehicles.
That I remember driving, it's really hard to drive.
It is, it's a big truck, but it was designed for a completely different job than what it is.
All right, council, any more?
November or December.
Any more questions, Roger?
Yes, sir.
November or December, you have to have that order in the same room, to save the fourteen thousand.
Save fourteen thousand dollars, I had to have it ordered basically before November.
And we gotta pay full prices down payment.
There is no down payment.
No payment.
No, no down payment.
You'll just give them a promise.
Yeah, through, through, through this in-house financing, I said, I can't, I don't know about the, the GMA's, but. Through the in-house financing, there, there is no down payment, and my first payment is due three hundred and sixty-four days.
So you're making a prepaid expense?
Yeah.
And, and there's nothing wrong with the prepaid expense?
All I have to do is, is enter into a purchase contract with a tag on it.
Chief would do a purchase order, and it should not go to be a prepaid expense.
Sorry.
What was the cost of the green?
The green?
Yeah.
Oh, I was joking, I was just joking, they don't have a green that's sitting there, I was joking.
Well, they got one green one.
That's somewhere else.
I'll buy, I'll buy the glasses and change it to.
City of LJ has DOT yellow on, on all their.
They call that green.
No, 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 they're straight yellow, just like Johnny's shirt. It's not that fluorescent color you're talking about, no, it's straight yellow, DOT yellow.
Well, if we, if we wait until after November, basically, we can just price together plus the seventy-five grand, just with, up with it?
Yes.
If we get this in before the deadline, we'll basically save about twenty thousand.
Yes.
Yes.
As we're going to budget, let's look at, going to purchase order, you know, before November, so we can.
And, and, and to, like I said, to be brutally honest, you're not gonna pay a dime on it till twenty nineteen, you know, if we.
If we fall out of the truck, you keep the other one as your reserve?
Yes, yes, the ladder truck would have to be in addition to a reserve. And it's, it's all ISO, which is Insurance Services Office, which determines how much your insurance is, based on how good your fire department is.
Right.
ISO is a strange animal to do business with, but they come in, a lot of the county departments have been able to lower their ISO class because they cover a lot of rural areas. Ninety percent of my district is commercial, downtown, the four lane, and all that. So they come in and they estimate, they take your largest buildings, which would be mountainside medical center, the apartment complexes, and they average how much water it would take me to put that building out. And I have to be able to flow that much water to be able to have this ISO rating. And that's where those figures come in, I have to be able to pump at any given time, three thousand to three thousand five hundred gallons a minute for an extended period of time. That's why we have two trucks that pump fifteen hundred gallons a minute and the reserve truck.
And if we get a ladder truck, how big of a building would you have to have the story in?
The shortest ladder truck I could buy, which would be a seventy-five foot stick, which is just an area, no platform, wouldn't require about ten more feet than my building's current depth.
That's too bad.
Story.
But you wouldn't want that, the stick, who would want an area one?
And when you talk about cost versus effectiveness, uh, a platform, a seventy-five foot platform truck, which is the truck that has the elevated platform, which allows two or three men to get up there and work, you're looking at probably one point five million dollars for a seventy-five foot platform.
Versus seven hundred, versus eight hundred thousand, I suppose.
Uh, you know, s- you know, eight hundred thousand to a million.
This guy's hanging up a ladder.
It, it's, yeah, it's the end of the ladder, it's got a, it's not a bucket, it's got a cage on it with the automatic remote control knob.
Dead man's control.
Dead man's control, uh, but there's nowhere to stand though.
Don't use dead man.
May have been a poor choice, or the councilman found you hard. And let's turn the cam off and forget that I agreed with him.
But, uh, how long before you have a need for a second fire station?
Uh, about five, six years ago.
I'd been disappointed if you had to say that.
Uh, those are, those are other coverage issues that we can talk about at another time, which falls back on ISO.
Well, would it, would that be in that, look, I know we're going, would it be a better idea to put something like a ladder truck out on the highway?
Yes, yeah, if we, if we bought a ladder truck today, we'd probably go on a station on the four lane. Engine two actually is designed to be housed on the four lane, of course, we bought that when the economy was booming, we didn't know the economy was gonna crash. Engine two has the roll-up doors versus swing open doors, it's actually designed to spend most of its life on the four lane. The compartment doors roll straight up, they don't open out, so you don't have to deal with traffic. You don't have to deal with the firemen stepping out from behind and opening the door into traffic. So that truck is actually designed to spend the majority of its life on the four lane.
Jim, you mentioned this wash, maybe something maybe in the future that could cover, something?
Would you splash it over a firehouse?
Maybe?
Yep, I, I think we got two more years before we vote on another.
Didn't have to have a plane, though.
And, uh, this, this is, I think this is a great candidate for it, of course, I.
You could.
I can think of a dozen more great candidates for a second fire station.
Obviously, obviously, I mean, I'm, I'm not asking you to, you know, spend all your money on me, to be quite honest.
Oh, really?
Yeah, just most of that.
Well, I think it's two twenty percent.
Just twenty percent.
Keeps eyes on them, just really saving this money.
It's a, it's a storage dirt city.
Well, that's what I was asking.
I was just wondering, would splosh cover a, a fire building, I think that's a split.
You can, you can, the only thing you can't do with splosh, as my understanding, for, with emergency services, is hire people. You can't pay salaries, but you can build infrastructure with it, you can build, you can buy vehicles, equipment, stations, but you can't buy people with splosh money.
How that's done is, strong from the referendum, and you describe how you want to spend the money, and labor is never gonna be an option.
No.
I think that's a good idea, especially on the highway.
Our, this particular referendum is transportation. All share, we got a county unit for transportation and several others, but they got, we got twenty percent. Any other questions for the chief, he's got our attention with this, and he'll be on the council meeting agenda Monday. Anything else?
Thanks a lot.
Uh, just for your information.
I thought we had no chance.
Yeah, he, he told me, he told me to just go home and start drinking.
We're not that wild.
Go to the bill, right?
He spent our money last year on one check.
For, for your information, we have a meeting scheduled here Monday morning at nine AM to discuss Hurricane Irma. I as parent, to make sure all the department heads are here, the mayor will be here, and we're simply gonna sit here and talk about what if. The current track, which, as I've said a hundred times, changes every fifteen minutes, shows the eye passing just east of Atlanta and Pickens County. By Tuesday morning, the current track shows us in the sixty to eighty mile category winds, Tuesday morning. So we're gonna spend Monday morning figuring out, whether we're gonna crawl under the table or do something.
What, what is the anticipated time of hit around here?
Actually, it'd be Tuesday morning after daylight, probably. So we're looking at about twenty-four hours of crap time from Monday to Tuesday.
Okay.
Hidden daylight would be great, isn't it?
Yeah, it's, it's, uh, in the open ocean now, it's moving sixteen miles an hour, but it slows down once it hits land. But they're also still saying category three by the time it gets into middle of North Georgia, as far as winds go, so. We're looking at sixty, eighty mile, it's less than two.
You're talking about this being one of the worst storms I've seen in a long time.
It's the, it's the strongest storm ever.
Yeah, in, in history, I mean, they just, they just keep talking about how strong it is. Matter of fact, it's, they, they say it can get strong enough, they can't handle it, but I mean, how do you play with a five? And it's already, it's already a serious storm, so.
Really?
John, thank you, Steve, real quick, talk about, if you will, help me out with the, uh, request from John Trammell and the veterans moving the wire for the street now.
Um, John Trammell contacted me and Johnny on, on Monday. Uh, over at the Park and Ride, uh, City Parker, uh, they do the park, they're gonna put the veteran memorial. And they've kind of moved this thing two or three times, because every time where they put it, it ends up being over some utilities and stuff, so that was part of the discussion. But basically, uh, the city did away with their little thing, little power pole that we had put up there years ago for the, uh, marble festival and all of it.
Chamber put that in.
You know, we had to do that, do away with that, but it became ours, the city's. And so, um, you know, basically, you're gonna have to have some cable relocation, I think the way we're gonna do cable relocation is to get with the Georgia Power lighting part, and I think if we upgrade some of those lights to the LED lights, it should. I would say it won't eliminate all the costs, but it's a good chance.
How would they convert those lights to those poles?
Wouldn't, do, be between you and the lighting guy?
What would it look like? Because that's kind of an old-looking pole.
That's what I'm saying, they, they give you new fixtures and everything, that's what you have to work out with them.
You can do this.
And, and Jim will attest, are those LED lights, not a heck of a lot better.
The whole town's.
So, I think it's to the city's advantage.
I put them on every parking lot I can put them on.
Well, they, they charge us X amount of dollars, these are Georgia Power poles.
This, I'm doing the same thing with the parking lots.
And they, uh, charge us per pole, it's, they don't, they're not even a meter on these poles.
Their fixed rate, and that'd be the same thing with this, that'd still give you the fixed rate, and, you know, I think you just have to sign the contract, and it's contract time. I don't think it'd be much more.
And, and as it's gonna use less power, the price goes up, though.
Yeah, well, the thing is, the flat rate, you couldn't run up to your meter, it's cheap.
Well, they're fairly expensive, they're going up in eight, nine, ten, fifteen dollars now, maybe more than that, it's a little more expensive. But anyway, that's a good description of what we were going through the other day, and Jerry Blyfield, who's our retired electrician, came back in, and I got ahold of John and gave all the details on, and got all the contacts we have, so this is moving forward, and, uh, the veterans wanted to have this done quickly. Trammell is over there, wanna know why we can't get everything done yesterday, and his and the, uh, the contractor. So we finally came up with a, we'll get it done as soon as we can position. But anyway, this is moving fast, and Trammell's a pro, he kind of keeps everything going.
So what, what's the latest location, in front of the Chamber building, the crossroad from the Chamber building?
The, the nor, the northwest corner of the green space at the Park and Ride.
Cross the street from the.
Cross the street to the. Yeah. Okay. There's several cross the streets we changed. But four, four of them cross the street to Chamber, was at the senior system, but we finally got, moved out of there, back over there.
It's gonna be right here.
What's that, is Bridge of Terms? Steve, all extension. Uh, but it was originally, we discussed it months ago, gonna be closer to the highway. And because of the new design, and right out of Trammell's mouth, hey, John, if you're hearing this, said that because of the elevation of the slope there, it's gonna be much more expensive for a ru- a wall behind it than the lower grade over there. much more expensive for a ru- a wall behind it than the lower grade over there closer to the chamber, and, uh, it, if it wasn't for the, wasn't for the wire, they'd be moving dirt today, they, they got their location, found that wire, it's a wonder they didn't start grading before.
No, thanks, thank you for doing that, I appreciate it. That's what the whole idea of getting the location for.
It could have been over the sewer.
It's a wonder, isn't it? Uh, and we, we, we're gonna have to add, matter of fact, we're gonna spend some money from the city, uh, we're gonna have to change the, uh, floodwater, stormwater coming off of the street across, coming down right through the middle of this property, so we've gotta catch it and go south with it, uh, toward fifty-three, and we'll go to a certain point out there and probably let it flow into the existing drainage area, what kind of we got planned, so all this is gonna be happening, but I'm not real sure of the timelines that were discussed earlier, those were hopeful timelines, especially when you're dealing with Georgia Power, and, uh, not gonna take that personally, John, but they don't respond as soon as we decide we wanna do something.
Well, it's like turning a battleship, so just go with that.
But most people don't understand that, they're trying to get you to do it so they can start construction yesterday.
Yeah, but it's no call the day before, so.
Well, we do here. Okay, uh, Lisa, uh, millage rate, council, uh, we were not, I wanted to postpone this, I thought we were beating over the same horse, and, and, but, uh, Lisa and I were discussing, I said we might need to call this meeting, not, it wasn't all the squawking and crying and bickering, but I was quite content, they had the council meeting, money with no big expenditure, no, we're gonna bring Roper up until later, but this issue decided that we needed to really have a meeting tonight to get you up the street on our millage rate. With that, Lisa.
This is the, what happened.
And also, Ann, your, your cries and the loneliness were heard.
Well, I appreciate they were heard, but.
They were heard, but they were not received.
Yeah, I know, he wouldn't, this may make the council meet, I know that.
It really is, it really is.
Anybody want something to drink?
Water, get a, a beer, please.
I like water.
Sorry there, Kim.
You all like me.
The top sheet is the calculation, to calculate if we're gonna have a tax increase, if we leave the millage rate the same or not, that first column is the two thousand sixteen digest, uh, the second column is what has increased since last year based on reassessment of our existing property, and then third column is other changes, which is growth, buildings, annexations, uh, so our, uh, tax digest has increased, and because we had some reassessment increase, it, it, if we, if we leave the millage rate the same as it is this year, we're gonna have a point six percent tax increase, which means we'll have to advertise in the paper and have all these public hearings, and it'll be, you know, a tax increase. Um, I'm proposing, based on, you know, we started working the budget, and we think we can work, you know, with, with not having a tax increase this year.
Stove some nice smart water, put the carrots out by us more.
So, if you're saying they had lives here, is that correct, was it for the same reasons?
Yes, we had a, it was very small, I mean, point six of a percent, which, in dollar-wise, it's six thousand dollars.
It's not worth the paperwork, that you'd have to have a little.
If you're gonna increase taxes, let's increase taxes, and not, not.
If we're gonna do it, do it.
And, council, we have, over a twenty, twenty-five-year period, we have gone from eight point seven five millage rate to four point eight one this year, or four point eight one.
It's, it's gone down, it's gone from four, four point six eight, six five five to four point six eight.
So, this, this would be another decrease, tax decrease, uh, basically because our city is larger and also is more valuable according to the county tax factor.
Yeah, rollbacks, four point six.
Six thousand dollars is what we're talking about.
No, no. Wouldn't pay for a Roper truck.
Would that take a rope? I hurt my feelings. I said, Steve, you know.
I've noticed. Okay.
We're all the back there in New York, essentially, since you.
We've been, we've been successful because we've expanded the size of the city manyfold, and, uh, of course, the different, uh, approaches or philosophy of the county tax office, all property has gone, gotten more valuable, your house, my house, over the years, and as those increased, we were able to pretty much stabilize the city, not mainly because of our annexation, you know, some people I like refer to it as colonialization, we have been able to grow and expand and pass that on to our taxpayers.
That second page is the five-year history, if you wanna look back, and that's what, that's to add that they go in the paper, uh, to advertise our, uh, millage rate, um, have the, I was hoping to start advertising next week, and I think I sent all of you our, our kind of budget schedule.
Well, here's gonna be the biggest question, how much of the tax crease, tax increase for a hundred thousand, so people have an idea of what the, how much most of the people would get, you know.
Hundred thousand.
Just kinda use as a base of somebody's, how much does the tax increase?
Let you, let you round a hundred thousand dollar house, what was your tax fee?
Well, they increase, please, I can see it, that's what you're doing.
Yeah, they use, everybody in the news always uses that kinda.
Well, it's only six thousand for the whole.
Whole city. If we make this change, their individuals' home tax bills will not change.
In the city, yeah.
In the city. That's, that's probably more understanding than, um, they said they're on a hundred thousand dollar house.
I just don't wanna think.
We've done this since, what, two thousand six?
Well, we're not, we're, 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 Monday night, we'll have this presented to you for a, I'm sorry, Jim, finish your thing.
We, we haven't, we haven't changed the amount of tax on an individual's house since two thousand six, I believe, maybe before that.
Uh, you mean go up? Well, we never had an increase, we not had the meetings, we didn't have the hearings, so, uh, what we always do is try to roll back, we've gone from eight point seven five to where it is presently, because we have annexed, uh, all of the commercial property on five fifteen, then our tax digest in a city today is how much?
Two twenty million, two twenty point five million.
That's gonna be the value of the properties, isn't it? But, uh, what, what do we actually collect after we go through the process? One point.
One point.
And twenty-five years ago, for example, we collected about a hundred and eighty thousand dollars total property tax in the city, so, uh, with even having our, keeping our twenty million rate level for what a house would cost, say a hundred thousand dollar home, like John mentioned, it's always, in nineteen ninety-two, if you go back and look, it's pretty close to the same as it is today on a, on a residential.
Well, I think the other thing we gotta talk about is, uh, we're coming into the budget, as far as I know, you still don't have any idea what health care is gonna do to us.
No, I called, well, old Stella had called me out, said that he was so far off last year, I don't know, he, he said eight to thirteen percent is what he gave us arranged, and I told Stella, do me an estimate of fifteen percent. Maybe we oughta do twenty.
More than this year.
Something gonna happen between this time and next year.
Yeah, hopefully, it'll be less than what you predicted.
We talked about it so much just this, I'd say, I don't think we waited too late last year, but.
So it's your.
Is that what it was?
Yeah. So many things down to us, right, really, at the last month, last second.
Takes a lot, a lot of bookkeeper paperwork to do that, too. We only got one person in.
But how much?
Saving would be.
I'm not saving.
Well, let's, let's, let's talk about insurance, just, just, just a few minutes, is that we've seen insurance go crazy over, what, the last eight years, nine now, uh, and I'm not trying to beat up Washington, but somebody's gotta get off the snod and correct this, because this is the next great energy crisis, we, we can get forward to stay in business, and I know businesses can't pull or stay in business, somebody's gotta correct this, or we're gonna be in the dangerous recession you've ever seen over health insurance, and I understand you over the energy crisis, but health insurance can put a company out of business just as fast as you.
Or faster.
Or faster, and it, it's scary what's happening, people learn anything about it.
I'd like to look at it to see, I mean, we might be able to justify a person to be able to do that, if we save enough, I mean, we.
If we, if we sit around here and don't do any of that.
Yeah, well, we know we're gonna get a.
We, we know we're, we're gonna keep getting twenty percent.
And we did research other companies like ADP and other, these other people that do the insurance and do all the paperwork for us.
Well, that's what Matt suggested last, or that was one of his options, they, they bitten you.
You're in a stock, but the, the providers, it's gonna get where they can't conduct business either, so it's, you don't hear, you don't hear much talk about it, it's, it's the payers that are doing this, not, I don't need the government payers, which are the largest, largest providers, it's insurance.
Insurance companies, look at what they, just look at your statement for the insurance every time you.
Absolutely.
You use it, um, they're getting pennies on the, on the dollar, uh, and.
Now, the implication when I talked to, uh, the guy last year was that they would manage all of it, they would do, that, that, that they would actually, they're, he had a broker that he's following.
Go through step insurance?
Yeah, and I'm glad to reach out to, it was, um, Marty Callahan's brother, let's do.
Yeah, they, when he came.
Yeah.
Look at, just take a look at something.
Part of, uh, what they do, where my son went to work, uh, they offer their employees a cash option, to not take insurance.
How Georgia Power does that, is they, they don't give them anything, it's just pennies on a dollar for nothing.
Well, this is, uh, seventy percent of what it would cost to.
Don't they have, how many insurance file?
Well, that's supposedly supposed to go away, well, and also, too, a lot of people can carry on their wife's plan, or somebody else's plan, or whatever, that encourages them to do that.
That'd be fair.
And that could get you down, y'all were talking about the fifty people, if you've got fifty or less, I'm sure that would probably get you down below that if you offered a cash option.
And we figured last year, each employee was about fifteen thousand, close to fifteen thousand dollars before we stopped.
Well, last year, we, we started charging the employees, which I don't think any of us are active about, um, well, I don't know if we can charge, I don't know how much more we can hit them with, certainly not a full amount, uh, and I don't wanna take it out of services, uh, so we, we need to be, in some way to get this down reasonable, reasonable cost.
It may take a combination of several things.
Yeah.
You know, to, to do that.
I just don't wanna wait too long to be looking at it. Does it match no returning calls, and we need to.
Yeah, yeah, that's where, that's where I got those questions, but he talked to Stella.
He's a heck of a resource for this insurance, we've been dealing with him five, six, seven, eight years now, maybe longer.
It's not always the agent, a lot of times it's just the company, and they, they got, their hands are tied, uh, yeah, I know, they know.
We, we went through every one of the insurance, that was Blue Cross Blue Shield and, and what's the other insurance, United?
United.
Yeah, they're, they may have moved out of Georgia, but.
Well, I was listening to the radio, they were talking about this morning, I forgot that, I think they said it was like South Carolina, one of the states, that they had like eighteen providers, now that we have three because of the, everything's a win, I mean, your choices are really getting smaller and smaller.
Well, I just asked, we look at what we can.
We'll, uh, call Matt again and tell the council's concern if he wants to come and address the council.
Okay.
He's payable this month, or if not, definitely by next month, gonna be too, we have to be ready with our process.
Oh, bless it.
So.
Or better yet, just tell him to be looking at, coming up with suggestions, I don't wanna be easy done.
Yeah, come up, give us as many options as you can.
Yeah, he doesn't need to be coming up here and telling us, uh, what we already know, he needs to be getting as aggressive as he can on, uh, finding, uh, coverage at a reasonable cost.
Can we reach out to the Callahan guy and ask him what his options are, too, give us some levels to compare.
Well, he actually came to meeting last year, and he didn't have much difference to say even to what Matt did, did he?
I remember him coming, I'm, we talked about.
Yeah, Michael was.
He was here.
Uh.
Uh, maybe, maybe, we had several meetings there, like.
Oh, for the base.
Oh, for the base.
And may, and may have been for a budget meeting.
Yeah, yeah.
Now, he, he was in the lobby, I mean, he was, he was in the group of council.
He came to the council, yeah, didn't speak.
Oh, I see.
I don't recall him speaking, that's why I'm asking.
I wonder, I think when he came, I think, if I remember right, it might have been too late for him to do, because we needed to get with him sooner.
Talk about the option, it was too late, I remember that, I just don't wanna skip which is too late.
Well, I just wanna say, can we reach out to him and see what his options are, or maybe compare.
For that, and call ADP, or what's the other one, uh, Humana, whatever, a bunch of them, I mean, they do all the administrative part.
And make them reach out to the council, he's already reaching out to the council.
Even the kind of information that our, we, something we didn't want to give, and I can't remember.
First one, I think it's on the floor.
Yeah, it was, that's, that was.
They sent a Roy survey that.
Yes.
We didn't have time for that, too.
And it's all privatized, you just don't need enough privatized, but you can't, I mean, it's, they keep it, they, they can buy it by your earbrows, it wouldn't be like we'd be able to look at our employees and see what's wrong with them.
Yeah, well, there's issues with that, I pick up from Stella every time, I wanna know if somebody's out sick, difficult to find that one.
Yeah.
Hipper violence.
Hipper, for schools.
I work in the field.
Hipper for health, and hipper.
Hipper, yeah.
It's dangerous.
Yeah, but anyway, on this millage, all I'm gonna ask for is approval to advertise, and we'll approve the millage rate the next meeting.
Yeah, haven't that to be weeks two, three?
I think two before, I was the start this week.
That's, that's basically reducing the millage rate, is what we're doing.
Yeah, rolling back.
We go forward with it, or keep it, we got several weeks of town hall meetings, trying to explain why we're having to make this. All that will be brought for you Monday night, so, thank you. That's pretty much what we had, council. Uh, guys, you think anything I've left out, David? We're working on the budgets, uh.
Maybe that helicopter I have to give up.
Yeah, uh, so, we're meeting with, so, warming heads, and, and hopefully, we'll be able to bring you a tight, secure, firm budget for next year. Now, of course, we'll be having our meetings, and I think you're gonna get them their, uh, outline as of when we meet, uh.
I, I, I email this to y'all.
All, all, all the ones will get a copy of that.
Did y'all set up those depreciation schedules?
Yeah, I mean, I've got depreciation, I know how, how long we appreciate equipment, you know, vehicles.
Yeah, 'cause we're really, I'm kinda concerned, we wanna make sure that we're not buying everything every twelve years, once you wanna, sometimes you keep a vehicle too long, you actually lose the money, and so, if we're gonna buy it, we'll be a little.
But I mean, that's two different things, really, I mean, how long you depreciate is different, and how long you don't, you know, it's on.
That's what I'd like to see, you know, starter purchase. Yeah, start equipment, but you gotta look at your depreciation schedule, see how long you wanna keep them out, how far you wanna keep them.
Okay, I'm done, Jim?
Uh, we talked at the last meeting about, uh, getting committee together, look at, uh, the Pro Roper property, as I call it, like, better name, anybody has a better name, we'd be glad to use it, uh, but.
It was called Roper before we bought the Pro.
Yeah, uh, so, I have a committee of councilman Proctor, uh, representing Rick Jasper, Marty Callahan, Amy, um, Lee, Jack Dunn, and Amelia, uh, Amelia was not able to attend a little organizational meeting we had, uh, she was becoming a grandmother, I believe, and, and
becoming a grandmother, I believe, in, in.
Houston.
In Texas.
Houston during the storm, so, uh.
She was underneath, was she?
No, she should have been.
I've heard she's okay.
Uh, anyway, some things we talked about, um, is, uh, talking to the, um, industrial authority about finding a way to ease the second house, uh, to the arch council. That meeting is set up for next Thursday at ten thirty.
City Hall?
Here at the city hall. I think everybody was in agreement that that's something we wanna try and do, you know, it's gonna take action from the industrial authority to make that happen, but the committee was very excited about that, they were also excited about looking at, uh, the restrooms. Saw the need for getting an architect involved with that to plan the space and get engineers' opinions on, on the building itself. Um, Representative Jasper is just looking at, um, possibility of some grant money for that, and we'll be able to report on that soon. Law and discussion about the amount of parking, uh, to put on there, uh, walking trails, amphitheater, um, a lot of good ideas that will be developed, uh, we're not there yet, uh, I think this group will come with a good recommendation to counsel, and we will continue meeting on that. Other thing I had, uh, is the presentation of the downtown study, I understand that that's on the agenda for Monday night. I got the doc, I don't bring them in here, I've got the documents that were presented to council, uh, in my office, uh, I'll give them to you if you want. Uh, I mean, I'm not gonna read them for Monday. Well, okay, all I got is the, the photos they took, or the, uh. The plan, the plan, or the, the renderings, I guess it was. Well, I, I think they had some verbiage in the, in the study. I think they have, I, I have to put my hands on that, I don't, I didn't have that, the attachment when I looked, looked for it, but I had it, I had it played out in my office for months, uh, after the council meeting. Well, I, I think council approved an expenditure nearly forty thousand dollars. Forty-eight thousand. Forty-eight, uh, I think it needs to be presented to council and discussed at, at a meeting like this and decided we're gonna take some action on it. So, I'm happy that, that, that that's been presented. We, we paid them, I'm sorry, we paid them the final check.
Oh, yeah.
Months ago.
It was all paid in sixteen.
Yeah. So, they, they were here, they were happy, got their check and went back last time. Well, I think it's something we need to talk about, I wanna spend that forty-eight thousand dollars and then I'll be discussing.
Yeah, there's a big report, yeah.
Power at the Ching Park, um, area, is that a city? The county pays the power bill.
You have the top lot, they have the bottom lot, like, some of the lights, some of the, we got the parking, right?
It's split?
Really?
The park itself is the county, the lights, so the county is the county.
Yeah, although.
But what happens, the history on that is when we decided to renovate the park nineteen ninety-three, before, few weeks before the Marble Festival, we took on the task of renovating and remodeling the county commissioner at the time. City did most of the work, most of all the work, and after we finished, uh, we felt like maybe the responsibility of the county should be that they pay the power bill. And, uh, of course, we maintained it and kept it up and all the hookups for the, the festival is done by us, but they, they get the, they get the ticket on the, on the power bill.
Who's doing that now, what's your time?
I've still got him on retainer.
Oh, okay.
I'm never gonna let him go. Well, I just, there were dozens, campers parked down there for the festival, which I thrilled they were down there. I hope our neighbors, uh, to the, uh, festival area were just as thrilled, hoping it was quiet enough for them. I didn't see, I didn't hear much of it, I did, I rode by a couple of times and they looked pretty sedate. I'd say that.
I heard a lot of positive feedback from people around the community during Jeep Fest, they was really tickled to see.
A lot of people driving those, well, be sixty thousand dollar Jeeps for pretty nice people.
It was lots of people, they were, they were excited to see something happening on Main Street. A lot of good positive feedback.
That, that's wonderful, I love seeing the campers down there, that somebody's gonna have to go eat somewhere.
Well, that was a problem, we went to a restaurant and out of food, so that's a good thing. Well, there were a couple of local, uh, gas stations experienced shortages, and it was not because of the hurricane in Texas. They were allowed, they were, they were allowing it, it was Jeep Fest customers. Friday afternoon, I saw what could have very easily been two hundred Jeeps in the Walmart parking lot, that's, that's tax dollars that they're throwing at us.
Absolutely.
I mean, the lower height in the parking lot was full of Jeeps and they were all walking toward the store, they're not.
So, that's sort of they wasn't partying, weren't they?
No, they're not gathered up talking, they were walking toward the store, I mean, hundreds of them headed toward the store, so.
So, what, the question about the power, so, just.
I just wondered who was paying for the power 'cause we got people using it, uh, I don't know that I wanna do anything about that, I think it's.
We're not gonna tell the commission.
Is that, so that's not y'all, is it, is it, it is, 'cause I, I know for the Marble Festival, there's some issues with the power, on the generators and such, and I don't even really know what, what they are.
Well, basically what the problem is, is the power source is over by the housing authority.
Got you.
And they've got three hundred foot of wire, which was intended to feed twenty-five amps of service, well, now these big modern kitchens, dude, they're like rolling houses. It just wasn't designed for.
That's why we have the restaurants over there in the corner, yeah.
I mean, it's like trying to run a ten inch water hose, but, you know, just ain't, ain't gonna do it, so.
Well, I wouldn't clear on what they, what's common complaints, just, I've heard comments about generators.
The, I know in, in LJ, up out there with the, the Apple Festival, lines have had a completely redo their whole complex, and it cost them a lot of money.
Right.
So, I mean, it's, to be able to run these, you get fifty amp, fifty amp, fifty amp, fifty amp, it's, it's a lot of juice. And then when they're cooking, they use these deep fryers, they ain't nothing but deep, they're just dead shorts.
Right.
You know, and, and they're all being run off one of the one-off wire, you know, it just wasn't designed for that, so. I talked to, talked to people up on Main Street, that camp that was under a tent in front of OJ, that Friday night, and they were from Jacksonville, Florida, and that's the closest place they could find a state of Jack, or even, and the house out in the woods.
Really?
Yeah. You're looking for Jeep Fest map that shows where they're pre-registered to come from, that vehicle's far to California.
Had somebody in South California.
California, Colorado, Michigan.
I just, I just found that the plus, plus like a child would rent a house for, and, and, well, that's not far away, they, and a little lodge, school, they tried to get.
Right, a lot of these people, a lot of these people book the local hotels a year, they, now that they've sat on Labor Day weekend, they don't, you know, in the beginning, they changed weekend. A few, first couple of years, but once they sit on Labor Day weekend, these people are just going ahead and booking before they leave for next year.
We got the Small Engine Show coming to town this week, thought it was really nice. I'll, I'll get Jerry Blackwell to give you information, John knows about as much of what's going on over there.
I just didn't, I mean, I, I didn't know what the problem was, but now I know.
It's just, uh, they're packing it in and pulling some serious amps, and we give it to them, other county.
And when we, you know, we got boost there if they're running their generators, and that's kind of.
Well, you remember when Marble Festival started, they had a little tent, and they might have hung some of them little Christmas lights with the, and that, that was it. And now they're pulling in these big trailers, I mean, 'cause it's become a living for these folks, that they quit their day job.
Oh, yeah.
Pulling this stuff every weekend, you know, and, and most of those things already have generated generates, don't go wrong.
And we, we supply a lot of that, a lot of powerful, a lot of doors, yeah, we supply a lot of powerful, a lot of vendors over there as it is. Uh, and I remember two, three years ago, they were flipping a breaker right there when we first go in because, I mean, they were pulling, they pulling everyone's power, what they could do.
The one, one, a lot of, a lot of larger parterons do, is they'll say, this is your booth, that's your stuff, now if you want fifty amp service, you gotta pay me extra hundred dollars, and I mean, that's what they do. And, uh, basically put the cost back upon them. Well, they pay it 'cause they, they do so well on the, on the festivals, I mean, it's, they're so many major projects now.
It is.
Jerry already runs up here, you do water.
We, we, we revamped it a couple of times. And, but Jerry does know that system, that's why he is definitely retaining it for the festival so that we can get as much power as we can through the system.
All the cookers are, the main thing down there that.
I see some other forms laying around, who's in charge of this?
This is some of the other drought, uh, of the, for the, tonight drought, Blight, the Blight. And just basically I want y'all to look at these, please read them, make some notes, get them back to me, and I'm gonna get back with Bill and Ann when we meet, uh, again. We'll get, try to get something written up, I would have brought up a TMA scent, but it's only three hundred something pages, uh, so I don't think y'all wanna read that. But, uh, we basically need to take, unless, there's none of these, these are all different other cities, I mean, we're not gonna just take one copy of, they, they done all these midwest dreams. But just kind of read through, and, and the thing is with Blight is, you gotta remember, Blight is, that's the only one that increases our value of our property, is hopefully gonna attract, you know, more business to come and, you know, when we come, but, and it, it's really a problem, I mean, you look at towns with all these old dead Walmarts sitting there, you know, just falling in on themselves, we don't need that up here. We wanna grow, we, you know, so we've gotta find some way to sit out getting, you know, people keeping up their stuff and keeping it clean and nice and neat. It's just amazing how much more, it goes, you don't have to be rich, you can be clean. My mom grew up in a dog town, she don't even need pork, you know.
Blight, speaking of Blight, uh, the depot, uh, most of you probably heard already, Michael Duke.
Duke.
Michael Duke as a man ace, uh, purchased that, now, we all attended meetings trying to get this thing purchased and trying to get it away from the railroad, CSX going to the local railroad. This guy pulled it off, he owns the, uh, one in LJ and also does the, uh.
Trolleys.
Trolleys.
Could you give a little bit of advice about that?
Oh, that wasn't all right. He's got paint, so like, yeah, exterior paint. We went up, our crew went up and cut all the bushes back before they, they even, the crew didn't even know that, uh, he had bought it, but he was pleasantly surprised that we had cleaned up a little bit around it before he got there.
What is the window is at ten o'clock?
He gonna have, uh, different businesses and a little mall that you might have a realtor, he in, in LJ got a realtor and he got three or four other businesses inside, yeah, it's nice.
Is he gonna have to move it?
Nope, he wants to put a wrought iron fence between the railroad and.
Probably seven feet or something, it was so close, I couldn't.
But they, but they evidently agreed to it, he put the fence up and keep people on the other side. And we, when, we went up and used a mower and, but cleaned up all the way around the park lot, that, uh, progress all the way around that down, and actually cleaned up around that old building that had been, has been abandoned, it used to be part of the courses.
I'm glad to see that right here, this close to town, it'd be, be really, really easy on the high compared to what it has been.
When they can clean it up without having to move it. What's, what's the trolley owns it, is it, does it run on the track?
No, it's, no, this is just buses, bus trolley, uh, this guy owns them.
They look like trolleys, they're called trolleys.
Yeah, yeah, uh, Lisa was more fatuated with the guy, probably wrote a book, tell them about the name of the book, he just.
Goat's on the, Goat's on your Laminates there.
Yeah, he's published, this guy.
Goat's on.
It's a, it's a motivat, motivational book.
How to Kiss a Meal or whatever it was, or.
I did, oh my God, I'm a little heck.
His mother wrote a book, it was How to Kiss a Meal or Wendy Kiss a Meal or Norman's Mom, you, you remember her? Evelyn Jules.
Yeah, yeah, she wrote a book, Wendy Kiss a Meal.
Something like that.
Yeah.
But that, that would be nice for people.
Yeah.
But, uh, if y'all look, I mean, I've got one, it's from Hayfield, it's got some, some really good stuff I like in it. And then the Barnesville was, this is a draft that they're working on, and me, if it's more, it's more small town to me. And then City Acworth has got some good stuff too, I mean, they all got good stuff, but I don't mind Barnes good stuff, it's probably gonna be good organs, but I really like the input so we can get this done. But I don't, like I said, I'm not trying to turn anybody away, I, I think I wanna bring business to Jasper.
How hard would it be for them to, how hard would it be for these four cities maybe to get some photos of some of their existing buildings and stuff in the port and have something to actually say what they've got going on?
I could call and ask them, um.
Bet you go on their websites.
Yeah, and, and if you look at, I think Channel Eleven had a thing on it a month ago, where they were talking about the Cadd County taking care, their big thing was tires laying around everywhere, old tires. And they, at all times, they were worried about the, the, this, this, the virus, was that? Zoonavirus and all this other stuff, and so, but, you know, I just would just like to see some parts of town get cleaned up and look foreseeable. And, I mean, look at West Church Street, and when they fixed it up and, and working on it, I don't see a lot of that going to, to waste, you know, and similarly on the east side, I mean, we're seeing some improvements, we're seeing new buildings, we're seeing a little bit of movement, you know, let people know that we're not dead or, or, you know, just staying still, though, we are trying to grow, create jobs.
If I might, if you just look at Main Street, kind of the old rope rock building, building what we looked like a few years ago, uh, the, the landscaping on Main Street, but you also got the property that was done by the Dunn, I called him a kid, he's old, older than I am before, Dunn that, you've got, uh, even what STS did for his property years ago. Uh, but then you got where John Luke's office is, where Luke did, the blue building is gone, uh, town's looking a lot better just by private enterprise, people. And, and occupancy on Main Street is up, uh, and, and the, we have Jeep Fest, we bring people in, they see this, they say, hmm, this might be somewhere I'd like to invest money. I don't know if it's the weather or whatever, I thought town looked really good during the Jeep Fest.
Oh, it was full, it was great.
It was, it was.
Anything else, guys?
I wanna give them some, uh, some favorites, just, these are a couple of things, we're looking at the personnel policy still. Stella was gonna bring a book for everybody, just so you could kind of see what we've got in place, these are some, just some ideas that I typed up, like a social media policy and some things that we might wanna look at adopting. And this is kind of like he said, just some feedback on what y'all think with, um, with it, and then as we move forward, then we'll.
This is what you're committed with.
And I'm gonna tell you something about social media, JLSA almost got screwed by it.
You did?
JLSA.
There's a lot of companies that are getting bigged up with it for sure, um, unfortunately, so, you know, I don't know that that's the policy that we want, but it's certainly, I think, something that we need to look at and address nowadays with social media.
And thing is, most of your kids now, where they're getting the news, Facebook.
Ain't that a shame?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We all know if it's on Facebook.
It's true, it's true. I'm with you.
Exactly.